Under.
This time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. No takers today. Presentations and discussion of department head, committee, and board reports. Heather, how are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well, I'm doing well. You have a presentation to make, correct?
Well, I have.
Sort of.
I'm scared.
You're gonna let us know what's going on.
I got it in, it won't happen again.
No worries. It's not late.
Do I need to read it to you?
No, no, not at all.
Looks like you're gonna be busy.
Yes.
Thank you for the report. Beating a lot of kids, huh?
Yes. What is a cricket?
It is a machine that, it's like, it cuts out different shaped stickers. And you can use it to make T-shirt, really anything you can use it to make. So we've cut out all the names and logos and we pressed them on all the jerseys and we made all our own jerseys this year.
Did you get, did you get the kids involved?
Um, actually, they did help pick the jerseys and stuff. We did not let them do the pressing just because it's too hot and if it gets creepy then we're starting over.
Okay.
What's the unclaiming money?
Um, I was just looking into the Boys and Girls Club. There's Texas Unclaimed Money um, on our site and someone had passed away in 2012 and left the Boys and Girls Club uh, seven thousand dollars. And so I'm going, I'm in the process now. I'm communicating with them to try to get it. It is a little bit difficult and different because we have changed our name and um, but so far they're working with me and hopefully it'll be done by the end of August.
Looks like some exciting things, and the summer badge on Ford.
Yes, that was hugely.
Okay, um, any questions on that report or any of the other reports? Going to consider approval of previous court minutes.
I'm caught up.
I didn't see the thing. Read through the mail rather quickly, but I would make a motion to approve the uh, main court minutes as written.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Uh, going to consider approval of treasurer's monthly report for July, as of 2021.
So we finally, um, we moved money out of Texas class to put into our bank general fund to cover um, our payables going forward. So far, don't anticipate moving money for this month, but as we go forward, before we start collecting that property tax revenues, um, we will be watching what's being paid out through payables and how much money is put into the bank. That's kind of what I have to report for this month.
They don't make a motion that we approve the monthly treasurer's report for July.
All in favor? And my apologies, we'll go ahead and finish yours, but then we'll go back to increasing projects and donations, I totally skipped over those. Approval of treasurer's monthly personnel information report.
Um, just for y'all's information, we had, I don't know, seven new hires in um, five terminations. And again, terminations can be that they voluntarily left or involuntarily left. But we've been busy with position changes and that kind of information. We also have the overtime report. A decrease in the sheriff's overtime, um, who's finally fully staffed. And then we saw some overtime in the parks and the senior center to note take.
They didn't make a motion that we approve the treasurer's monthly personnel information report.
All in favor? Court to consider approval of treasurer's quarterly investment report.
Not a whole lot to note here, except for um, with Texas class, we, that was our highest interest clearing investment account. They had a major influx of money um, these last couple of months from other taxing entities, which dropped the rate that Texas class was providing. So um, I don't anticipate interest rates going up anytime soon. That kind of really hurts when you were look, looking at the budget, what interest we've received last year compared to the interest that we're receiving in the shirts. Taking a toll substantially on our budget. We really hope those interest rates climb back up and I'll continue to do what I can through the PFIA and what the court has set forth for the investment.
You mentioned the difference in the, in the uh, interest rates. Do you remember what it was last year?
Last year, I know in revenue, it was well above fifty thousand. And this year, we've received under five thousand, so.
One tenth?
Yeah, um, the bank is providing us a better interest rate than our investment funds. Yeah, but we don't want to hurt the banks with money because then they'll drop that interest rate. So we're kind of balancing right now. Getting the most return and what best we can.
They didn't make a motion that we approve the treasurer's quarterly investment report.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, let's go back to old business, which I just somehow skipped. Court to discuss and consider increasing project scheduling and staffing.
All I got going on is there's people with stop signs now. Fifteen hundred dollars, lighted stop signs off the cabin rooms. All of the curb signs are gone. They cut the pole off on the stop sign, took the entire thing off.
Holy moly.
Torch? Torture.
They wouldn't be straight, at least they could have cut it straight.
Wow.
That's dangerous.
It had to be Friday and that because it was there Friday afternoon, I go through it, Saturday it's gone.
Those things aren't a lie, do you?
No.
They're him, those stop signs.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, it was the lighted room.
Silver. Took solder off.
Yeah, they cut it right below it. You know, because it took three bolts out of the bottom, took the whole thing.
Exactly. Or bumped it with their truck.
Yeah.
And it broke off.
But anyway, that's what we're doing. Got the D M project done, I guess.
We're blowing and trying to put the frame up for a additional equipment shed to keep all of our equipment out of the elements. So we're working on that, of course, courts as our.
Yes.
We had to slow down that a little while.
Right.
But so we're working on level twenty-one this week. Getting ready for the decommissioning of that project.
Yes.
We're going, going, going when it's not raining down. I don't know. Especially if it's raining down. Standing in the. Moltenation.
Really?
Yep.
It's good, but slows down progress.
Yep.
And I will never, I will never complain about rain, ever. Anything else there? All right, uh, court to consider accepting donations to county entities. Looks like the only donations are to the senior center. Eight ninety-five and forty-five.
You guys have a motion to accept donations to the senior citizens center.
Right.
All in favor? Court to discuss and consider Choice Partners by board to repair all the building damage roofs for Shakka County.
We're continuing to see when it rains, um, more and more leaks. And Choice Partners is the one that replaced, uh, or the bids were on Trust Partners to replace all roofs, metal, shot on, the, the, the white ones, the polymer, uh, the built up roofs like on the courthouse. Was used, they did a great job. Armco made sure that the job was being done correctly. Found a couple of roofs like the um, one there in the park that had built up roofs underneath the built up roof. And had become dangerous because of the amount of weight there at the armory. And before they started putting on new roof, uh, he actually stopped them and had them to tear off the other part. Of course, first talking to his hat.
Sure.
And making sure that they would pay for it. So with Armco and with Choice Partners, we have done very, very well in getting these things replaced in a short period of time as compared to other avenues. And so I would make a motion that we allow Choice, uh, our Armco to get with Choice Partners and get these roofs replaced as soon as possible.
Okay. Just a quick question before we vote. How many roofs got damaged?
As far as, as far as I can tell, all of them, yeah.
I just wanted to verify.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
And they're locked up.
Uh, yes.
Is your telephone ring on that, Trey?
As soon as they can get our uh, agreement to use Choice Partners, then he's writing the specs at this time, Greg.
Yeah.
With Armco, writing those specs. And soon as he gets those finished, he will send digital copies of the specs to the county, which the judge will have one, we'll have one, the auditor, whoever needs it. Uh, and we'll get it done. And get it done in a short period of time.
Because they told me initially after the estimates and all that, that it'd be, that guy told me it'd be this fall, probably September or October.
I mean, we're looking at schools, just like us. I mean, they've got so, only so many contractors and, and now we've got a bunch of live nights that are coming out of the woodwork everywhere. And are wanting to do these and they piecemeal it, they want to piecemeal it where they can, because they only do metal or they only do built up or they only do polymers, polymer roofs. So with Greg and Armco and Choice Partners, it, where it's already prebid, uh, we can go ahead and let him, allow him to get that contractor in place so that it doesn't take as long as it will otherwise.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, court to discuss and consider an after school care fee and raising enrollment fee at the youth center.
So I did print off um, just like an estimate on if we were to raise each member either by ten dollars or if we were to do it like we do um, with our after school program at sixty dollars per member or forty-five for sibling. So I did do ten dollars on the bottom, ten dollars and five dollars for siblings. So we could see the difference in prices and what we would um, initially make each month or week or year based on those prices. I mean, we can go up higher than that, but that was just a kind of quick idea to give us a number.
Okay. All right, so this would be for the weekly?
Yes.
Okay, and it's sixty dollars a year right now?
Yes, it's sixty dollars for a school year and then sixty dollars for the summer and then forty-five for siblings. Right now, we are sitting on eighty members, that was my cutoff. We're doing really good on numbers, so we do have a small waiting list. We'll see the need of that waiting list to see if we're able to incorporate. But if there's just too many kids, then we're just gonna leave it at eighty. But I don't know what you guys were preferring to do, whether it be ten dollars or do the ten and five. Um, and when we would start or what, but I um, kind of spoke to some of the people who were signing up yesterday and they were once again shocked at the, the price. I don't think there'll be any, and I do plan on, I know in the past that they've been closed like during Christmas break or holidays. Um, I will close for like those couple of days for Christmas and Thanksgiving, but other than that, we will be open during those breaks. So I think once, you know, I add that in the letter as well, like, yeah, we are upping it, but we're also upping our days that we're open. Because that's the number one complaint we have being closed when the schools close. I mean, that's the purpose of us is to help the community, so we will be open on those days. So I, I don't, I don't foresee it being a problem.
And so you say that we're shocked, that we're shocked because the price thing's so low?
Yes, it's, it's, I mean, and I, I've, I'm from California, I have moved here from Nebraska. So when I seen these, it's unheard of, like sixty dollars for a whole school year. I mean, they're robbing, like, it's just, that's unheard of.
Well, can we check to see what the average is?
Um, yeah, usually the average is like about a hundred and fifty a week um, on programs, yeah. And that's daycares, but like after school programs, it's usually like about a hundred dollars a week. I know where I worked at the Malone Center, it was a hundred and five per student every week. So, and that, I mean, we did the same thing, the only thing different we did is we did drive the kids home. Um, but they had transportation to the center, they had their homework out, they ate dinner, and then we took them home and that was a hundred and five. So sixty a week is even cheap essentially, so.
Is the school still building them up?
Yes, and um, we did send out bus letters to the parents, they and children had to sign it. So we don't lose that, you know, transportation. We stapled bus rules and regulations by Texas law and Snyder ISD rules. So there's no mishaps on the bus. And then there'll be precautions because I don't want one or two kids in the past, like, make it, or we might lose our bus system because they're not doing their job or following rules. So we made it so parents and students had to sign it and understand that they got the letter.
Are, are there some kids, I mean, because usually, I'm thinking the kids that we're receiving are kids that don't have a parent at home. And, and a lot of them, from what we've been told in the past, are, this is, the meals that they receive there are maybe the only meal that they get during the day.
Yes.
And so you haven't had any parents to tell you, you know, we, we just can't afford this, and if you do, what do you do there?
We have, and um, so recently, we had three kids who couldn't afford it. And myself and two other staff members, we take turns, um, usually sponsoring kids. Now, that is nothing new. Um, when I was a member, just, you know, with my son and not working there and working at the clinic, I sponsored two kids. Um, we frequently will get people who will sponsor kids, but so far, actually this year, it's only been those three, so.
So we're not leaving anyone out?
No, and if, and if we were, I would definitely um, help or find the need or work with people. Um, we've had people who paid, you know, late, I do payment arrangements, anything to help a family. I'm not gonna pressure you in my notes right now. And maybe even giving them the option of paying at the end of the month or as one whole, you know, you could pay up, all your rest of the weeks right now. You don't have to pay weekly, or you could, you know, work it out when you get paid, just to kind of make it easier for the families, especially with COVID and everything.
As long as those kids are being, that's what we're there for.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Well, I would say that doesn't improve ever. For ten dollars would be what we need to do.
Then on the weekly membership fee? What do you do with the uh, yearly fee? Membership fee? Keep it, keep the same?
And keep it the same?
Raise it?
And do the five dollars per sibling? I mean, somebody's got four or five kids, that could.
We have, yeah, we do have about three families with five plus kids. So.
So you don't want to put them in that.
Yeah, I, that's, that's why we usually do that for the siblings because it adds up with my three, so, yes.
So the membership is sixty dollars a year?
Yes, well, sixty for that program. I don't want to say a year because within the year, we have essentially three, we have the after school programs and the summer program and then another after school program that starts. But each one is sixty.
And then ten and five?
Yeah, and then it'd be ten dollars weekly and then five dollars for siblings.
Okay. So it's six weeks, okay.
I make a motion that we uh, go with the ten dollar weekly and five for siblings. See how that goes.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, Heather, appreciate it.
Sounds like you're doing a real good job.
I appreciate it.
All right, court to discuss and consider hiring additional jailers for the sheriff's office. That would be for additional inmates at the jail. So um, we discussed it just a little bit last meeting, but um, let's go ahead and talk about it today. So um, you want to kind of give us some details on that, Trey? What three additional jailers we're doing, where we stand as far as inmates and all that?
But I spoke to Bishop yesterday and Taylor County, he's my biggest one. And uh, he, they're housing about thirty, thirty-five inmates in Rankin right now, which is about three, three and a half hours away. And I said, if we, I said, here's what we're looking at doing. I said, would it be, not holding them to anything, obviously, because we can't do that. But I said, would it be a possibility to get those inmates? And he said, yeah, for sure, I would bring them to you, wait, so I closer here than there. So uh, not a, you know, not necessarily a guarantee, but it, in a way it is. I mean, because he's saying I would bring them to you, but, you know, as quick as possible, if I can. So now, I know there's been questions about everything today, and let me just touch on some numbers. I wrote some numbers down. We're at eighty today, populations, jail populations eighty today. And I don't think I touched on this, this might answer, it might clear some of it up with y'all as well, on our, on our people. The, today's population is eighty, fifty-two of those are local, so that we only have, we're only housing today only twenty-eight out of county. So uh, that's one thing, like I said, I didn't touch them because we, and I spoke to the judge about it before. As those, as our local numbers creep up, it pushes our able, ability to house out of county down. And you know, so, and, and again, I don't, I want everybody to understand, you know, what, how it works. Because I know it, it does get confusing with the numbers, I, I completely understand that. It gets confusing with us because it's not, it's, it's always, it's literally changing every single day. You know, how many we have, how many we don't have, how many they can bring us. So this is just proposing. I mean, I don't, like I, like I've told several of y'all, I, it, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other if we do it or not. I mean, it, it's, it's beneficial, it is a potential good income for the county. Now, you know, do we have to, we do have to spend the money to hire them, but even, I mean, even that, if we can house, if we can, we can gain forty additional inmates, I'd contract with them at forty-five a day, which is, that generates eighteen hundred a day, fifty-four thousand a month, of six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand a year. So it'll be about four hundred thousand over hiring the inmates, I mean, hiring, I'm sorry, hiring the additional jailers, you know, so uh, I have a fine line to walk and I'm not gonna get out of that with the jail commission. That's how come, and I, and I, and the rate, the numbers do look funny sometimes to y'all, but, and, and again, I, I'm at eighty today. I could, could I be at ninety-six, I can legally be at ninety-six with the staff I have? I can't do that because um, I can't fill the jail up without county inmates. And then if, and then if the judge sentences someone to jail, Judge Armstrong sentences someone to jail, I don't have a bed, which puts me out of compliance. So I keep about a fifteen, twenty bed cushion in there, that, so, you know, I don't, I've heard, well, why don't you fill it up? Well, I, I can't, I mean, I have to, I have to play by the jail commission rules as well, so that's why I don't do that. So again, that's why I'm saying with, with where we're at today, I would put in additional forty, which would be a hundred and twenty, still gives me about a twenty bed cushion. We can do one forty, or actually one forty-four, but I wouldn't, I probably wouldn't exceed one twenty. So that, that the, the additional staff, if y'all choose to do that, would allow us about forty more inmates. Look at, with today's population, now if our, if our current local count goes down, you know, if that fifty-two drops, then obviously we can, we can balance that out without accounting. So there, there are just lots of moving numbers every single day. It's, it's hard to, I can't just stand here and say it's, this is how it's gonna be today, this is how it's gonna be tomorrow, I just can't do that. But like I said before, if it, I don't, I don't see that, you know, I know some people are saying, well, you, you're asking for money. Well, it, it is, but it's not, first of all, it's not just for the sheriff's office, it doesn't benefit this my office at all. It generates additional income for the county, is all it's doing. So, and if that changes, if, if, if for whatever reason Taylor County builds a huge jail and we can't house them no more, we can eliminate those positions to attrition, like I said before, we don't have to keep them. And with that being said, you choose to do this, we don't have to, like we discussed, we don't have to hire them right this minute. I mean, we can wait and see how, you know, just because you approve it don't mean we have to do it. We can, we can wait and see now. Like I said, I spoke to him on the phone yesterday afternoon and he's, and he basically said, you, whenever you're ready, call me and I will bring you the inmates. So that's the discussion we had yesterday. So that's where I stand right now. So, yes, and if y'all have any questions, please, I can do my best answer.
Last time you were here, you were saying that there was someone else that approached you, another sheriff?
Yeah, a sheriff, yeah, Stan Parker in Howard County. Yeah, I haven't been back in touch with him, but he was asking me at the conference about doing a contract. He was interested in doing a contract because he's, he had asked for variance with the jail commission, which means he's overpopulation and he's asking to keep a few more in there temporarily is what he's doing, but he, that's not a long term fix. So he's looking at contract, so. We turned, we turned down, we've turned down several, you know, I shouldn't say several, we have turned down other counties that are looking for beds. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a demand today for beds and I think in the future, there's gotta be, you know, and I don't, I don't want for a long distance future, but uh, I think in the near future, there is, there, there, there's lots of county struggling, so. I have a question for you, Trey. In two thousand and nineteen, in February is when we were approved for you to do this, correct? Yeah, to hire the additional? Additional three. Okay. Okay. And as of last Friday, you still have that exact same number of employees. Did you not, in you, in nineteen and part of twenty-two, this pandemic got started? Was that not enough for, for what inmates you had at that time? We, that, that staff that we currently employ today allows us to house ninety-six, so. Am I, is that, I'm not, I don't know if I'm answering your question or not. My question is, as of Friday, you had ten dispatchers and twenty-three jailers. Okay. That were hired in nineteen. Yeah. When we started, you started housing out of county inmates. Yeah. And that, and in eighteen, you were at twenty jailers. Nineteen, you hired three, because we told you you could. That's my question, why do we need three more? Did you not run all three pods in that thing? We, we did, we can open them, I don't know how to explain this, the, it, it's, it gets, it's confusing. And, and, and I'll tell you why it's confusing, it's because the way the jail's built. There's not a separating wall, so I can, I can, two pods are on one side that are up, we have three pods, two on the north side, one on the south side. The two, the two north pods, I can, as long as I don't exceed forty-eight, there's, the, the jail commission rule says forty-eight to one jailer, you can't exceed ninety-six with two. There's two pods, right? So they, so we, we bounce, we're bouncing, and I think that's another point of confusion. We, we're not officially opening the third pod, it has been, we utilize it today. But it's just not, we don't have, we can't, we, we bounce back and forth the way we move the inmates around within those pods. But we, we can, we can jail two, we can, we can run both pods with one jailer as long as we're not exceeding ninety-six. And be in compliance with the jail commission. And then, I mean, the one side, the south side is easy because it's forty-eight and that's all there is on that side. That's where the confusion comes in, is those two, the jail commission allows, now, if we had a, a distinct wall. That's where the confusion comes in, is those two, the jail commission allows, now, if we had a distinct wall between those two pods, then we would have to. We would literally have to have a jailer in both of those, because it's separated. We can bounce the numbers around, that's what allows us to do what we're doing, because there's no wall there. So we, we, we utilize the third pod, I mean, I, I think everybody's thinking, it just closed down, lights are turned off, we utilize the third pod. But it's just, it's, it's how we're utilizing it, we have, like, we have one inmate in there right now that is set on murder charge that we have her isolated. So we, we're using the pod, but we can, we can manipulate, I don't want to say manipulate, it's probably not the best word to use, but we can use the numbers that we have today. With, and, and house up to ninety-six. Now, if we're going to exceed that, which we would, by doing what we're discussing doing, then you can't, then we couldn't exceed, it, it would, we'd be in. Out of compliance with the jail commission if we exceeded ninety-six.
And that's my question, I'm trying to understand it. In nineteen, you did it with twenty-three, and what was your average in nineteen, because you generated a tremendous amount of revenue?
That's, that's right, we did, and I'll tell you the reason we did. We only had twenty local inmates, or fifteen local inmates, and all the rest of them were out of county. So it was the balance of who, it was the balance of who we was housing.
That makes sense.
Yes, that's exactly, that's why I said, well, go, our daily count today is, whatever I told you, fifty, fifty-two. So as that goes up, it pushes our out of county down. That, but that's when we opened it, that's how can we open, that's how can I come to y'all with the additional, I'm, I'm saying we have these beds available. But we, we stay in compliance, we have to have the staff, so that's what. Our local number was way down here and it allowed us to put a bunch of out of county in jail. And now, our local is creeping up, which is pushing our, our revenue side down with the out of county.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it actually does, that was the answer I was looking for.
So it's not so much about pods as number of bodies?
That, that's correct.
Local, local number.
Local, that's, that's it, that's it, we don't get paid to house in local, I wish we could, we'd be rolling.
We put locals in jail.
Some of them don't like playing by the rules.
That's right. More and more sounds like it.
Yeah, it really is, and I mean, it, we're seeing that, because Dan's having more court, which is good, we're cleaning them dockets up, and Judge Armstrong is doing the same. Where those dockets are moving, more people are getting sentenced to jail time, we're housing, here's another problem, and Terry can speak to this all day. We're having to house these, like, mental patients, that, I've got one that's been in there, he's going to be in, in our Scurry County Jail for probably two and a half years, because he's mentally incompetent. And we're waiting on a bed, and he's been waiting a year, over a year and a half, and we're probably still six to eight months out, before we can take him to this facility. So, we're having houses go, I mean, he is, we're literally just, he's there day in and day out, now we have two of them. So that is starting to, I mean, obviously not, it, it always has, but it's, we're starting to see it's more prominent these days, because more of them are coming to jail. And they're filling the jail up, and I know that's, that's not a discussion for today, but it's, it's huge in the Sheriff's Association, there, there's a big lobby about. Mental, mentally incompetent people being in jail, it's terrible, I mean, but they won't, the state won't throw no money at mental health and mental facilities, so. We're stuck with it, and that's terrible to say, but.
Yeah, we need more facilities, all the beds are, all the mental health beds are full, and they stay full in county through.
Well, like I said, we sentenced him, he's going to be two, two and a half years before, I mean, and they told us in vermin that they. Whenever we had him sentenced, that he was upstairs, that he was going to be, it was going to be eighteen months before the bed was available, for a year and a half, or beds available for. So, it's bad.
It wasn't that we didn't have enough beds, at one time, they just mopped all a bunch of the facilities, and then said, oh, we'll just let counties take care of it.
That's exactly right.
Which is wrong for mental health patients to be in there.
With that being said, our, our, our local numbers have creeped up on us, and it, like I said, it's, it pushes our out of county down. You know, I mean, we can still, like I said before, we, because I'm transparent about this as I can be, I want to be. We can be, we can, even with being short on revenue this year, which we're going to be, we're still going to clear, after, you know, after we pay those three additional jailers that we're paying currently. We'll still be a hundred, a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty above that, so. Even coming short on our estimated revenue, we're still generating money from the county, with what we're doing today, so.
And, and just to be clear, when you say fifty-four thousand or six hundred and fifty thousand a year, you're talking about over and above.
What we're doing.
The cost of hiring these new people.
Well, that.
There's that all in all?
That's all inclusive, that's six hundred and forty-eight thousand would be. That would, you'd have to take the two, you'd have to take the two fifty out for those jailers, so it would, it would leave four hundred thousand in, in revenue, after we pay.
Potentially.
Potentially, that's, that's exactly right, I'm sorry, I say that every single time, potentially.
When the potential goes away, then attrition gets rid of those extra.
Absolutely, there's nothing that says we can't.
I mean, that, that happens even now, I mean, if you didn't have anybody to, if you didn't house out of county inmates, and our population went to twenty. If that's, our jail population went to twenty, you would have to do through attrition, you'd have to get rid of some of those twenty-three, because you only have one pod open. Now, with that scenario, so that happens regardless of what we do.
Yes, it does.
Any business is going to have a time that they are going to be way up here in their generation of net revenues, and then the next three months, they may be way down.
Right.
Because it may be cyclical, and that's what you are, you're cyclical.
Yes.
And.
I don't, I just don't see it being a risk, even hiring, I know it is a lot of money initially, to hire them, but I, I think the benefit.
We're not paying it all upfront, though.
No.
Paying it by the month.
That's right, it's paying, well, everything goes like it should, it will pay for itself, I mean.
But what do you pay for itself this year?
Not this year, no, no, because we haven't even met our, we haven't even met our set revenue for this year.
Well, if you can immediately, I mean, if, if you are able to get those inmates from Abilene here, thirty inmates. Then that thirty inmates is going to pay for those new staff.
It would start, it would, but there's, there's a, I have to, I have to get them hired, first of all, we were just discussing this, you got to get them hired, and then there's probably going to be a month. Process of training, and then, then they have to be housed a month before we bill them, you know what I mean? So I'm just saying where we're at right now in the, in the calendar year.
Every business has startup costs.
Yeah, but we're at the calendar year, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that we would see, we would see revenue this year from those additional inmates. It would come, but it, it's just going to take time. Yes, ma'am, I'm going to say it'd be three or four months, maybe the end of this year, but it, it wouldn't be tomorrow, if I hired the jailers tomorrow, it's, it's kind of, it, it just takes a little time to get all that in place.
Yeah.
Do you still think you're not going to make your budget?
I, well, I don't, I, it don't, I don't, I don't feel like we were, I'm not going to sit here and lie to you, I think we're going to be short, I feel like we're going to be three, four, two. It said at five, and I think we're going to be at three fifty to four, Angela could probably speak to that.
He just turned in more, there's more yesterday, brought in, they're at two twenty-one, beginning, or the end of last month, probably around three fifty. If he gets the first payment in, if he does start hiring the jailers and bringing those in, and gets the first payment in. After the thirty days, and they go a little bit more than that, but it is not going to make the five hundred thousand that's in the current budget.
Part of the reason is pandemic?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is.
Why you didn't reach it?
That's not over yet.
And that's why we kind of discussed, if we approve today, he doesn't have to hire tomorrow. You know, kind of see where pandemic is, but it gives him, it would give him the ability to go ahead if, once we get through where we are now. If they stop sending inmates, you know, we wouldn't have additional jailers just sitting waiting.
We'd have it in the budget.
But we would, well, the, the, not necessarily them there, but if. Kind of wait and see over the next month or two or three to see where their current COVID situation ends up.
Before approving for him to get.
Before he would actually hire them.
But I'm saying that you would have to put it in the budget.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
But that's my big room, is a budget amendment, it always has been.
Well, we're talking about for next year's.
You'd amend it this year for the budget that's not been approved yet.
Okay, you're talking about doing this next year, not nineteen.
Well, what do you, well, close. Were you thinking, go ahead and get started soon, or, we would have to probably do a budget amendment to get them hired for this year, yes, ma'am. We're looking at that, I was thinking more along the lines of.
Well, I, I thought you was talking about waiting, if you wait three months, you're never ten a year, I mean.
So.
Because you're halfway through this one.
Yeah.
Number four left after this one, so.
It's not going to generate any more income with these three.
Not until he can, not till he can get them fully prepared to do so.
But if you don't hire them till January, you're pushing it further.
Pushing it even further, yeah.
You don't hire them till January, you don't push it on till March, April, May, next year. Who knows what?
Yeah.
What happens? Either way.
That's right.
Either way.
I, I think from the day, just to give you all an idea, I think from the day that we hired them, you're probably looking at sixty, probably sixty days, maybe ninety days. Before you're actually going to start seeing revenue off of those, off of hiring those employees. Because you have the, you have the training process, and then you have, you know, we house them, we build them at the end of the month, so. You have a whole thirty days of housing before we even send them a bill, then they're thirty to thirty-plus days paying, so, you know what I'm saying? You're sixty to ninety days from the day you hire, for you're probably going to start seeing revenue going up.
Right, so we'll certify revenue in twenty twenty-three from housing in twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two.
We do that at the end of every year, we do it, we, we have, we, we build for housing this year that we get paid for next year, but we apply it to this budget year, do you know?
No, you can't, and once we close out the year, it, I mean, we, we recognize that it was a revenue that we gained in twenty twenty-one, but are receiving in twenty twenty-two. Like the Cedars money that we got for the grant, but it's over and above what was on our budget, but it can't go back in the previous year's money. But we will have to do, if you do hire now, we will have to do budget amendment, because we're not budgeted for the three additional staff, and we won't have that revenue to help bring that up.
And so during the educational process, getting them ready, are, are you paying them from day one, the same amount as you would as they become?
Yes.
And I thought you were, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir, they're on the payroll from day one, but even through the training process, they, you know, we're still paying.
And so two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the cost for three additional, is that right?
Yes, that's for engine, I believe that's for engine everything, I think that's how she does it, is, not just the sound.
The highest amount of insurance, like the highest part that could be.
So you're looking at maybe, if you're waiting a couple of months to see what the pandemic does, right? Then you're maybe two months of pay out of two fifty, so it's not going to be that much money. Out for this year, not the budget amendment would not be that big, would not be that, and your potential to bring in. The amount of money that you've brought in in the past is there, especially with our local population going up. So I would make a motion that we allow the sheriff, with his discretion of seeing how the pandemic goes, to hire. Do that right to hire those people, and when he does, if he does it before the end of the year, that we do the budget amendment needed. To pay for those for to the, to the end of the year. And our hope is as if anything, that it does the same thing it's been doing for year after year after year, when we didn't know what it would do, and it's, and it's done it, it hadn't always been. It's been extra income and a lot of it, so.
I'm not questioning the income is generated at all.
I know you don't like the budget amendment.
I don't.
When you've.
How many, you probably said this, per jailer, how many inmates?
Per jailer, yes, forty-eight, forty-eight.
On three different eight-hour periods? Are you doing twelve-hour periods?
No, we're on eight hours.
So, three, a jailer for every eight hours, for those forty-eight.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's right, three.
Yes, and we have, you know, it, I don't know if it seems a lot, but you know, I, when people are on, they're on their days off, they're. We got vacations, sick, you know, I have to, for the state, I have to have so many people in that building at any given time, so that's the. It's not as easy as like, you know, well, Joe Blow's on vacation this week, we're just, I'll have you, I, I, I don't have that luxury. Somebody has to take Joe Blow's spot that week, so that's the fact that I find, you know, same way with dispatch, you know, I mean, I just, I have. Those people have to be there twenty-four seven, they have to be, they have to be in that building, so.
And I can't speak to that, we are having difficulties even just getting jailers and dispatchers off for holiday time. They're supposed to run out of holidays after sixty days. We're having issues getting them to take it, and it's not because they don't want to take it, it's because of staffing. So we have several F and L A issues going on, it's a very large staff over there, and there's lots of moving pieces going on, so.
So one jailer would benefit you, sir? One jailer would benefit you?
No, no, but, yeah, I basically need, I need one breed shift, is what it was, that's why I need the three, to cover all the shifts.
Three jailers, about one thousand a month, so if it was two months, it'd be about forty-two thousand.
Or the potential income, I think that's really cheap.
If, if it was the last couple of months of the year that he hired them.
And there's a thirty-day waiting period on health insurance, so that's.
Sure, so it'd be less.
Be less than that.
Just to let you know where the numbers would be if we had to do a budget amendment if he hired at the first of November.
Okay, so you're, are you saying to wait on this until the first, until?
I, I would, I would say. I would say give, if we're going to give approval, give approval today, and ask him to wait until we see in a couple of months. What the pandemic's doing before hiring.
It also takes a while to actually get them hired.
Well, like Mike, when I understand it, I'm giving it a mailbox, we can work it.
Maybe not any time, didn't they cut that in June?
Some of the states that did that actually got sued by the people that were on it.
Did they win?
I don't think so, it's just now coming up, but I've read, I hope they don't win. It's a democracy, if you don't work, you don't eat, that's what I'm thinking.
Right, so you made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? I understand, thank you. All right, court, discuss and consider road use agreement with Enel, is that Enel?
Enel.
Enel Green Power North America, where it's designated for county roads to be used in the decommissioning and restoration of the wind farm located at Highway one eighty and County Road eleven twenty-one.
Okay, so this is with the county attorney, and we both agree that the road use agreement is fair. And the only problem was in identifying exactly the roads, you know, Google, whenever they are coming from Fort Worth, or from Amarillo, or God knows where, north. The Google takes you places you shouldn't go a lot of times, and. And the decommissioning is not going to be that big of a deal, because we're not bringing in a lot of heavy stuff, they're taking some three mags out, they didn't tear the roads up that much, they did pay us some money on eleven oh one. And so we're, we're talking about doing a denim rather than, or a different exhibit, rather than just agreeing with the road use, so. They've agreed to that, so we're going to do an attachment to this agreement, and because they really don't know what roads, they had, I think, two roads in precinct two. Because they don't know the first number. And because they really don't know what roads, they had, I think, two roads in precinct two, because they don't know the first number begins, the precinct. And they had then eleven forty-two, which goes nowhere and is known within ten miles of that project. So what needed to be there was County Road eleven twenty-one, which is where their main entrance is off of U S one eighty. And then eleven oh one to go to Camp Springs Road to do the other three machines that are over there. And the, of the other part of it won't be dealt with, just the decommissioning of those twenty-one units. And so I can make a motion that we approve the road use agreement with the attached county roads for them to use.
So you're going to do them, yeah, to the road use agreement you have now, will have the proper roads on it?
Yeah, we will attach that to, as, as a, a Dan Omar's exhibit rather than agreeing to it with just the road use the way it was. They wanted to add in there first because of the way that Google does and because of the roads that could go on. Because of that, we're just going to add that exhibit to the agreement and they agreed that that was okay.
All in favor? All right, court, discuss and consider removing certified revenue from airport reserve fund to the enterprise fund. I don't have any issues with that. How much was it?
It was eighty thousand total. There was thirty thousand from the CARES Act, there's fifty thousand from ALFO. We've already certified earlier in the year, but it wasn't on the agenda to get the court to approve that it is Texas class airport reserve with the runway grant.
Got you. Okay.
Motion that we move the certified revenue for the airport to reserve fund.
That's it.
All in favor? Court to approve an election hereby ordered to be held on November second, twenty twenty-one in Scurry County, Texas for the purpose of administering the Texas constitutional amendment election.
That's ordered, so I think we have that election during that.
All in favor? Did anybody look at the constitutional amendments that they're on?
Let's save them, yeah.
Yeah, they're different. All right, court, discuss and consider waiving or lowering the tournament fee for the citywide championship golf tournament at Scurry County Golf Course. They're also looking at doing, so what they're looking at is citywide championship where someone can say, I am the champion of Scurry County Golf. And they're wanting to do one day at our golf course, another day at W T C. And basically they, they're asking to waive the lower fees. I think the last time there was a tournament there, it was seven fifty for the tournament fee. And that's what our tournament fees are. And we have where thirty dollars per cart goes. College said they have to waive the fees, if I understood correctly.
No. No, the college is not going to waive the fee. Chris said he would not do it.
Okay.
He said that his fee is a thousand dollars, his carts are included, so it averages out to the same as ours. Now, my vote would be no for the reason that, number one, we've got a tournament coming up this weekend, which is for Gateway. It's a benefit tournament for Gateway. Gateway pays that fee. And they are an entity that helps people. This is for bragging rights. And so it's totally something, and if we do it for one, we have to do it for all of them. And we've had the Christian School Tournament, they pay full fee, full price. So it's not fair for anybody else to get a deal on it when it's just for bragging rights and not for something like these other entities that are maybe sponsoring a scholarship for someone or something like that, you know, a benefit for someone that's been killed or died or something. So I just, that's the way I feel about it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any thoughts or discussion?
I don't mind. I don't see how we can change our fee something like this.
I really don't either. We just thought that only kids, if we're going to lower for the government.
Okay. Well, the request was out there, so had to bring it to you.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing is court to discuss and consider a dual membership fee for the golf course. This is preliminary. It's been asked about. There's been a little bit of discussion with college to have a dual membership. I know they have in the past. I don't know how many are even interested at this point, but it's something that I wanted to see if y'all wanted to even pursue the idea more than anything at this point.
We have done it in the past, Judge, and I believe that Darla can tell you that it's a bookkeeping nightmare that people come to you, don't think people would do it, but they'll tell you they're, they're a member. Maybe it's their uncle or their aunt or, or, you know, their dad or somebody like that. And they tell you they're a member out at the college. They come to the golf course and they say, I'm a member. And you've got, and if they don't have to prove it, which then you take a lot more time from cleaning golf carts and inspecting golf carts. So you, you wind up with more labor than it's worth. And we have, Tim and I have had two or three people come in and I've talked to others as well that are golfers out there and they, they don't like that idea. They feel like that, that the golf course was always going to be a black hole, just as we've always discussed. And we are gaining revenue. We are getting in better shape. A lot more people are wanting to play it. And those members out there don't feel like that that's something that should be done either. And then I talked to several at the college, as you know, Dr. Beebe is out. But those administrators, they remember that we're there, the bookkeeping nightmare that it was. And they just, they don't feel like they would want to do it. If Dr. Beebe comes back and says, okay, we'll take this to the board, that would be a different thing. Because she would be the one that has that power to do so. But as from what I'm getting back from the public, and I'm thinking Darla agrees, that it is very difficult to make that work and it really doesn't benefit a whole lot of people.
The words you're saying is a little, okay. There you go.
Yes, ma'am.
For one thing, for it to be profitable to us or to even break free or even with us, we would have to increase across the board, we would have to increase the membership amount. We'd have to increase regular play, carts, everything. We'd have to, because if we, that's like cutting our income in half. And our membership is not that expensive. If you want to do a membership, then get a membership at the county and get a membership at the college. We have some to do that.
Yeah.
And that way the accounting is totally separate and it doesn't cost, you know, either of us anything. You get your own rightful fees here and there.
We'll stay with what you said.
Yeah.
Once again, that was a request to discuss and appreciate the input. All right, court, consider certification of additional revenues and form a supplement payment from PAC for M B D supplement claim on multiple vehicles due to hair damage.
Received another nine oh five ninety-nine on one of the sheriff trucks. It was a payment on that. Do you want me to go ahead and read? There's three in a row.
Sure.
The next one is supplement payment for the twenty nineteen nine forty-one filing refund of thirty-three twenty-one ninety that we received. And then the PAC surplus distribution of medical insurance for twelve thousand and seventy-nine dollars.
My question would be certified additional revenue is as presumed.
Six, seven, eight, there.
I guess I'm the only one that knows raises. Thank you. Court to discuss and consider going out for bids for grade four silco rock from Sandmill Incorporated.
Okay, because of the lack of rock in our, anywhere around us, but we felt like Vulcan would be able to supply the rock to us, that hadn't happened. And they have not given me a specific date in which they are going to be able to do so. So Jim and I, I found out about a sand mill here that's on the agenda. And we went up and looked at their rock. They didn't have any at that time, but they said they could make it and would make it if we would agree to let them bid on. And so with the lack of rock that we have and the need to get to start chipping more and more, I'd make a motion that we allow sand mills to be able to bid and send them specs out so that they can bid on this and be opened in the, I guess, the next regular session.
Next month?
Please.
All right, all in favor? Court to approve the bond and oath of office for one precinct two commissioner.
I'll make that motion, Judge.
Line out on transfers and budget amendments?
There are two, but one budget amendment, but there was a, a correction that, I guess there was a confusion on there. That's the incorrect one, right?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. For precinct two commissioner for her office, from her, it should have been the one for seven hundred dollars instead of the original one for seven eighty. So here's the correction right there. And she had to purchase a new desk for the office. And then there's two line on transfers. The first one is the DA's office, office supplies for a hundred and two dollars out of other equipment. And the second one is the youth center and other equipment for five hundred and fifty-nine ninety-eight out of part-time. Now, it's, I believe, a trimmer, a edger trimmer, weed eater.
Yes.
My motion would approve the line of transfers.
In budget amendment. Is Monday or Friday?
Let me get back to you.
All right. All right, count payable?
Count payable is eight hundred and forty-one thousand three oh seven eighty-three.
My motion would pay the bills.
All in favor?
See, I got that one.
So. Favor. Heather, I need your autograph.